All right, I'd like to call this council meeting to order at 7:00 PM on August the 6th, Tuesday, August the 6th. It's actually 7:10 PM, so forgive the tardiness. We had some technical difficulties at the beginning. Let me start by congratulating Borough Manager Andrew Heyman on his engagement. It's big news. It's been circulating around town. I don't have social media anymore, so I'm not able to do that online. But congratulations to the Borough Manager. I would like to turn it over now to our Mayor for the flag saluting and vacation.
Joe, one, thank you for that, but also just to remember we had an executive session.
Yes, so I do need to disclose that there was an executive session held to discuss personnel matters prior to this meeting. Mayor, going to turn it over to you.
As we did before, take a moment for all the people that are fighting this virus. Say your prayers or whatever you do. Okay, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, go on to the roll call, Borough Manager Heyman.
Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daly.
Present.
Councilman Nick Waters.
Here.
Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason McGuigan.
Here.
Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
Here.
Mayor Bob Fry.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
And I'm here.
All right, moving on to audience participation. Do we have any participants from the community that would like to have their thoughts or feelings or questions read into the public comment?
Yes, we have two comments. The first is from Bob Kaler. "Greetings, Andrew. My neighbors and I have an issue with the filthy people at 1004 Taylor Drive. They are constantly feeding feral cats and leave their disgusting droppings all over our yard. Currently, they have abandoned vehicles in the back of their house that is surrounded by trash cans and other items that shield anyone from seeing the woman, I'm not going to name, feeding those dirty animals. They in turn are attracting other animals such as foxes, raccoons, and possums from the wooded area out to her house. They eat any remaining food. We have voiced our displeasure with this woman previously, and next to nothing has been done. What she is doing is illegal and needs to be stopped. As soon as it is permitted, we will be at Borough Council meeting to voice counsel in person. Please feel free to contact me at this email address as well as his cell phone number, which I can provide to council members after if needed. I hope to discuss this awful situation as well as stuff to be taken soon. Thank you, Bob Kaler, 1018 Taylor Drive." To note, I spoke with Mr. Kaler after this occurred. I also personally went down to the location and I had our code enforcer write tickets. When I last checked, it was a little better, but we're going to have to keep doing it unfortunately.
Okay.
All right, my second message is from Sandra Adams. Mr. Kaler, after I suggested it said, agreed and actually asked to have that read into the record. Initially, it wasn't meant for that. Sandra Adams, "Hi, Mr. Heyman. This is Sandy Adams at 736 Bennington Road. First, I want to thank the Borough Council for getting the street sweeper back out. However, Borough residents do not seem to be aware that they are to have their vehicles off the streets on a sweeper day. Sweeper has not been able to clean my side of the street yet. It desperately needs it. Also, we have been having a lot of illegal parking issues. I don't think our residents fully know some of the Borough rules. We have people continually parking parallel up and down in our common driveways overnight, et cetera. People are constantly parking on the wrong sides of the street for now, causing narrower streets and safety hazards for us drivers. The newest thing is they are parking up on the sidewalks, damaging sidewalks. I encourage Borough Council to recommunicate to our residents that safety rules and codes and the consequences. Can we give our residents new reminders, warnings, and then safety rules and codes and the consequences? I'm sorry, then start enforcing these rules. On sweeper day, maybe we can have the police department put a warning note on all cars and effective the next sweeper day, they will be ticketed. Can we do that with the cars parked illegally too? This makes our residents aware of safety rules. The parking in the back alley is a real concern, as first responders cannot get by these cars. My side of Bennington is a real problem with this on the weekends, starting Thursday or Friday night around 5:00 PM. It is difficult for us to get up and down our driveway. I truly believe many of our residents are not aware of these rules, codes, laws. Also, we need to have them enforced more often for all our safety. I realize with COVID-19, everything has been difficult. Now may be the time to work on this. Thanks, Sandy Adams."
Okay, Sandy, first of all, thank you. I appreciate that. Go ahead, was there one more?
No, I was just going to say, I wanted to let you know that I had already followed up with Sandy. Let her know that I will personally be coming down Bennington to check the vehicles. Chief, if you'd like to participate in that, I'd be glad to do it. We did this a couple of weeks ago with another resident at 6:30 in the morning on, I believe it was Grant and Delview. He can correct me if I'm wrong, and we had, I believe, Chief, you can let me know, but I believe it was eight vehicles that we ultimately had removed. Maybe more by now, but I think that's a continuing problem.
Okay, just let me interject before the chief, just, I want to just ask Alex. Alex, are our police forces allowed to enforce those sorts of things in the common driveway easements? They're not necessarily roads. They don't entirely belong to us. What, are there any hangups that we need to be aware of before we bring the chief in on this?
You're essentially saying ticketing for a vehicle parked in a common easement that the Borough has no ownership on?
Correct, so that the easement is for passage of all people that live along that easement. It's also for the purpose of EMS, an emergency response. If we need to get a fire truck down there or we need to get an ambulance down there. You know, I think that safe passage along those, to some degree, safe patches along those throughways is necessary for public safety. But, so that's, you know, I want to just run it by you because I know that the rules change when it becomes a common driveway easement and it does a regular dedicated road.
Right, and I don't know what your ordinance actually says regarding that area, but you would believe that if it wasn't blocking ingress, regress entirely, that you couldn't do anything under the guise that it would be preventing an emergency access issue. But if it is, that might be a different story altogether. So we'd have to kind of look and see what exactly is going on, where these things are positioned before we could say, well, before I can give you an answer as to whether you can enforce it or not.
Okay.
So, Andrew, you know, just make a note, give me the information, and we'll touch base with the chief and figure out what's going on.
How do we feel about, you know, issuing, you know, warnings and then resuming the ticketing? Because I mean, if the objective is to sweep the streets and nobody is cooperating, I mean, what's the point of running the street sweeper? So I mean, we were going to sort of ease the, we were going to ease the ticketing because it's been so inconsistent. And, you know, now that we have somebody who can drive the truck and we're kind of past the COVID crisis that affected other parts of the highway function. You know, I mean.
I think part of the concern was also the work that was being done in the streets as well, taking up spaces where people could park, making it more difficult. I don't know what the answer to the question is, but I do believe that was also a part of the consideration for not writing the tickets.
Does anybody have any thoughts that they'd like to add on that? I don't want to be the only person speaking here.
Warning would be good, considering we haven't had the sweeper out last, like, majority of the summer, when it normally starts and all that. And then next time they get a ticket, it gives them a warning. But if they've already been noticed a lot, then I say go ahead and ticket.
Well, I think that we formally relaxed, I don't want to say formally, but we informally sort of relaxed the ticketing, which, you know, I don't necessarily know is as a constructive thing, but I mean, for the most part, to get back to the street work that's been, that's been done by PICO, I don't believe that we, that we sweep the streets that are under construction. And I spoke to Sean about that, our highway foreman, about that, I guess about last week. I don't think he, so if there's a street that's clearly under construction, we don't, we don't push the sweet sweeper through there.
I think, Joey, I think the concern was that those cars on the street that are under construction have to move somewhere.
Right.
And there's already less somewheres to move when the street sweeper is coming through. My personal opinion, I talked to Sean about it the other day because I was out with the cleanup crews, and a lot of people were complaining about the street sweeper not ticketing. He told me that he was able to get to a good deal of the streets, that he was able to sweep a majority of the streets. So I'm not sure if there's specific areas where it was an issue, if we want to go out and, you know, say, hey, move your cars so we can clean your street. I'm not sure. But we just have to decide, is it worth it to ticket now with basically a month? With so much going on in the village with the construction?
Um.
What about a robo-call, Joe?
You know, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think people, they're kind of, they've had enough of our robo-calls. But I think, you know, we actually, as a side point, Kyle and I and Lee are working on putting together an app for smartphones, a Fallcroft app for residents, to sort of maybe circumvent that issue a little bit. But I guess for the purposes of this, like, what are you going to complain that you got a robo-call and then you got a ticket? That we, if we didn't give you the robo-call, you would complain that you weren't warned, but it's.
Well, I think Lee's right. I mean, it's so late in the year already.
Yeah.
With all the stuff going on around town, COVID, I mean, it's too late to start ticketing at this point. It's just going to give us a headache we don't need, especially with only a couple of weeks left.
So, you know, I tend to want to agree with that.
Something else that I want you guys to, two things that I think need to be discussed, and the reason why I, while I would prefer to be writing the tickets, why I would lobby that we still shouldn't for the remainder of the year, is the PICO work. It's very hard for people to find parking right now in the village, so moving their vehicles may not always be possible. And also because we haven't been doing street sweeping for the past couple of months, there's been accumulation of debris on the street. I believe that that's mostly gone now, so I think we could start talking about easing away from being more lenient. But because of the increased debris and because of the limited capacity of the vehicle, any vehicle for that matter, we cannot guarantee the times and the timeframe as posted. And so it would be, I actually think, self-defeating if we were to ask people to move their vehicles and then have them move their vehicles back in time, only to have the street sweeper come late and not be able to move because, because the vehicles had already been returned. So I do think we're probably approaching the point where we can get back to a normal schedule, but there's just, there's a lot of stuff out there right now. And so while it's spotty and it's not great, and this has done a good solution, I still think that we should wait for this year and then next year. Consider this year as a warning. I do think though that we should communicate that to residents, so a warning to residents in the form of a mailer or any other thing for next year and to be very clear about this, so that they don't think that they can't move their vehicle, they don't have to move their vehicles going forward.
Well, I mean, next year, by next year, I expect that we're going to be tightening up on our parking ordinances pretty strictly, and they'll be enforced to the letter of the law, starting next year with, you know, the advent of parking permits. I would hope to be by this time next year at that, at that place. So, yeah, I think I'm good with that. Does anybody else object to just, you know, continuing to relax those, the ticketing rules? Yeah, so Mrs. Adams, if you're watching, you know, I definitely appreciate your concern and I share your frustration. You know, given the current circumstances, sometimes, you know, I'm not a person that likes to make exceptions, but sometimes exceptions have to be made.
So, one other thing, Joey, that Ms. Adams brought up in that statement, and I mentioned something to this, to Andrew today, is that we may want to look into doing a mailer for new residents that gives them information about street sweeping, about parking properly in the driveways, about trash pickup, whatever it is. But like a new welcome to Fallcroft packet, basically, with information how to get your recycling cans, things like that. Because the turnover of residents, that's what she's saying, she's got a whole lot of new neighbors who don't necessarily know the rules. And, and let's be honest, they're not going to go look for the ordinances or go on our website and look for it. So maybe if we had a new resident package that came to their house, letting them know all this information, so then they could be informed. Might be something to think about going forward that would help with those issues.
Okay, so we just have to find a way to collect that data. So the best way to know, you know, who new residents are would be from, I guess, real estate transactions. I think they have to tender something to the municipality anyway, in the process of the transfer of real estate, there's a fee, I think one or 2%, whatever the total cost of the purchase was. For rentals, that, I guess that there would have to be another way for us to be able to intercept that information as well, to find out, you know, who's come to a new rental property. That would probably be something we could shake out through the, you know, the UNO and the inspection department. That's a good, that's a good, that's a good idea, Lee. Yes?
If I may, and this is the immediate, PICO is planning on doing the final trench restoration for their project. It might be worthwhile for me to get in touch with them and advise them that, that upon completion of those, that trench restoration, that I need them to street sweep. So it solves your problem, the vehicles will be off the street because of the construction, just for an intermediate anyway, to at least have the street sweeper go down. Because it appears to me that a lot of their concern is, or the residents' concern, is construction debris, like stone, et cetera, that may be still, still laying within the gutter line. So I'm going to throw that out. That should be happening very shortly. At least that'll give one part of, of the concern, so that we are getting those streets swept of any construction debris.
If nobody objects to that, go ahead. Yes?
So we're on that detail every day, six days a week, and there's been talk of doing it seven days a week at some point. I can tell you that they have a vehicle that brushes all the debris and gets everything up of their construction stuff, most of the, like, most of the time. So there's really never a ton of construction stones out. It could be cold patch or something like that. So, you know, the construction crew themselves have been doing a really good job cleaning up. It's just basically the trash and stuff like that, and people not moving their cars, which I totally understand. We only have maybe what, less than a month left of the street sweeper. So I think you just keep it as is. Maybe, maybe you set up, it'd be a nice day after it's done, you can set something up with a, some kind of thing as, as, like you said, a robo-call or something, to go out there and let them know that it's coming out. The street sweeper to clean up any kind of areas that we can, to clean it up before the winter or whatever. And then we start fresh in the spring.
Okay.
And I know, I know, I forget the lady's name, I apologize. What was that lady's name? From Bennington?
I think Mrs. Adams.
Mrs. Adams, so.
Andrew Adams, I think.
So while I'm just listening to what Andrew said, we will step up the tickets parked on the wrong side of the road and on the sidewalk and stuff like that, so that will be taken care of.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I understand the parking, but parking in the driveway, that's common courtesy.
Right.
When there's a fire, they send a fire truck down that driveway, and if there's a car blocking it, they're going to push it or they're going to drag it out of the way. You know, that's a, that's a real problem. Maybe they could take a car sparked in the drive, whether it's legal or not.
I mean.
Or the fire.
So I know, I know, listen, it's private property, so it's really hard for us to even get involved with that. I will take a ride with Andrew and see what's going on, and whoever this is or whoever's parking that way, I'll take down the license plates, and I will knock up the door and tell them that basically they cannot park there any longer. It's a safety hazard, and see how far that goes. I was just in school today, and there's a new thing out there that they were talking about, that where we can, where we can give a ticket on private property, and from what I'm understanding, it's in the vehicle code 335482. I have to read a little bit more about it, what it really entails, but it does give us some kind of leverage. But I will go out there and take care of that with Andrew if he wants to or whatever else, and get these cars taken care of.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, please let me know, Chief, what you discover too. I'm just going to assume that there are emergency access signage posted within these right-of-ways at this point?
There are not.
There's nothing to indicate, okay. So we're probably going to have.
There is not.
And the challenge with that is, is that in order to post them, they have to be posted on private property.
Right.
So it's all, I mean, you own from the front of your house, you know, through the, even the common driveway easement through your yard. So that does present a challenge. I mean, I know in other municipalities that, like for abandoned vehicles, property maintenance usually takes care of the ticketing on private property, which would, in our situation, probably fall to a code enforcement role. But if the chief is, if it's something the chief thinks he can do, there is, there's really, there's no better authority than from a cop in that, you know, so. Yeah, I guess, Chief, do you want to get with Alex and let him know what you find out and see what we could do about that? Andrew, in the meantime, get down there when you can, touch base with Mrs. Adams again and find out when this sort of behavior is prevalent. I want to, I want to, I want to be there with you. I want to see it, because maybe I can even talk to some of the neighbors, but I want to see it too.
I will take care of that with Alex as well as with Andrew. Some, most of the time with this type of stuff, it's more about communication, knocking up to the house and saying what your, what your concerns are, and it should take care of it.
I agree, I agree. Okay, all right, so that should conclude the audience participation portion. And if I'm not mistaken, correct Andrew, we only had those two, am I right? Yeah, we only have those two. So moving on to the engineers report.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy of my report, I believe.
Yes.
A couple of things. Andrew and I met with Lee Braun and Joe D'Amico concerning the lot to, the second lot that's, that's on Delmar Drive next to the Dollar General store.
Yeah.
They are proposing a Popeyes drive-through on that site. It's already been approved for land development. What will have to happen at this point is there's some changes that will need to be made. I believe Mr. D'Amico is going to reach out to the solicitor. I don't know if Joe has done that as of yet. There is language in the initial land development that speaks to the second phase and what needs to be done as part of the second phase. That includes escrow monies for work that would need to be done to bring the site to a condition where the building is on it. So there's some grading, some landscaping that will be part of an escrow. We'll take care of that once we have the plans submitted to, to the Borough. But in speaking to that, if you read my report, the initial Dollar General and the stormwater facility that we've been trying to get them to move on, we have, we have, at that meeting, spoken to Mr. Braun about that. And he is, he has told us that he will absolutely have that basin back to a workable functioning condition as part of this second phase. So they're, they're working through it. I told him that I don't know where things stand. We have, you know, because the school district is not in session, we haven't seen the, the fields as wet, nor are we getting the complaints that we were getting. So I believe it still needs to be done, and that's a positive, that we're going to see some, some additional development in that area. State Safe Stores started their demolition. I'm sure everyone's seen that. And we're still waiting, unfortunately, for the FEMA approval for work within the floodplain. So I'm assuming that that should be back either in a form of an approval or review comments from FEMA. It usually takes a couple of months before you would see a review. So right now, they are able to do the demolition, but from the pre-construction meeting, the DEP, Delaware County Conservation District, will not allow them to do any earthmoving. So that, that came out of the pre-construction meeting. So once we have all the docs, that point, they'll be able to start. So I'm hoping that that's shortly. I'd like, at the next meeting, to get an authorization. If you remember, we had done a bid for the pump station, and unfortunately, it was high, the bids were rather high. And we decided that it would be best to delay that project till the fall of 2020. So I'd like to get that out to bid, see what kind of numbers we have. In the meantime, I have a call in to DEP to see whether or not there is any chance of increasing, because we have bid it twice, if there's any chance of increasing that grant allocation. We have $34,000, so we'll see how that goes. I can't promise anything, but at least we're, you don't know if you don't ask, so that's where we are. The road program, I have it in my report that they were going to start on October the 12th. We received word today that that has been delayed. It will be the end of October before they start. Not a, not an issue, it's going to be a three-day project, but they are still on the previous project because of rain delays, so we're going to be pushed back. Now, I, I will have to change that for your next meeting. The walkway, Renell Construction was going to meet me this week, so we can go over the walkway into the Amtrak tracks right at the, at the bridge. Tony's proposing to do that within the next week, week and a half. I asked Andrew to forward to you the, the cost estimate for the road program. This is the portion for PICO. In discussing with PICO, they are willing to do a fee in lieu, so they would not do their construction, and we would be doing curb-to-curb paving. They'll do the trench restoration, and then we would be responsible for the milling and paving. That cost is $868,000 estimated. So my suggestion would be that we go ahead and we bid out this work, see where we are, because we are going to have to let PICO know shortly whether or not you want to take that fee in lieu. I believe it's still a reimbursement based on our meeting Andrew and I had with PICO back in January. I haven't gotten any verification that it is a fee in lieu that you would get ahead of time. So it would come out of liquid fuels and possibly your general fund to get that completed. So that's something that we will, I'll ask for that, that bid authorization. The MS4, I think everybody knows that we're supposed to be doing whatever we can, and, and the street sweeping is part of your MS4 program. You are required by that permit to do street sweeping at least every quarter. You know, with these circumstances, I don't know that DEP is going to want to cite any kind of violation because of the COVID. So I don't, I don't think that's an issue. However, the pollution reduction plan has been updated, and that is currently out for public comment. The comment period is a 30-day period, so anybody on council, any, any general public can come to the Borough offices, review the plan, and make comments to DEP on that plan. I don't know whether we are interested in doing a PICO Green Region project. If you look on my report, it's a $10,000 grant. It's for developing improvements for open space, doing, we could probably ask for, for monies to do work along the area between the two new buildings, the police station and the community center. We have that, that area in between that we were going to make a, some sort of a sitting area. However, again, it's only $10,000, so whether we want to go ahead, if we do want to go ahead, there is a resolution, so we'll have to do that at the October meet, or at this meeting. The deadline for that grant is the 31st of October. The deadline for that grant is the 31st of October. That's about all I have unless anyone has any questions.
No, no, I don't have any questions at the time. At the moment, does anybody else have any questions for the borough engineer?
One quick comment. Lisa, do you want me to send out that, that, that program early? I, I don't generally send out your report until the, until the general meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought everybody had it.
No, no, no. I mean, I can send it out early if you prefer.
Yeah, well, this way they'll be able to take a look at it. There's, there's some items in here, different projects you could do with the green region. If we don't do, do something, we could do some planning, for example, and just get a plan for that, a landscape plan for that area, what we do, or, or some other area that we could, we could think of. The master plan, for those of you who haven't, haven't seen it, there is a master plan. And in front of where the playground is, we are proposing as a separate phase, fitness stations. So we would put a fitness park in, in the front, where initially all the wall was, the, you know, this smaller playground. That area would be re-landscaped and, and some, and a fitness station, probably like a 10-station fitness area done there. So.
Okay. All right, very good. All right. So we'll move on to, is that everything?
That.
Okay, all right, very good. So moving on to Public Finance Administration, I'd like to discuss the PICO rest duration and how it relates to the road program. So the way I understand it is, I think you described the fee in lieu of them doing the partial construction of the one lane. So what they would do is, we don't know if the fee in lieu is a reimbursement or if it's a payment in advance of, is that? I'm not sure I understood the particulars on that. You're muted, I think. I'm sorry, Lisa.
It always helps to unmute before you start talking. Yes, that is the case.
Okay, all right, very good. So I'd like to also discuss insurance renewal. So Andrew, could you, could you fill in the gaps here on what, what it is that we, or some of those contracts coming up? Do we have to put them out for RFP? Are we looking into other options? What's, what's, what do we have on that?
So, and I'm obviously not an attorney, so I can't fill in all the blanks here. But I mean, Councilman Willis has also been working on this one quite diligently, or we've discussed it in the past. And I think the idea is to, you know, this is not about necessarily removing our insurance broker, AJ Gallagher. This is just about putting the process out for an RFP. I actually think our contracts stipulate, or our collective bargaining agreements stipulate that it has to be the same quality of care, even if it's at the same or lesser price. And I will say on a personal note that I would not tolerate for any employee, whether in a collective bargaining agreement or not, lesser care or higher costs, at least not at this stage and not until, you know, there is a new collective bargaining agreement or something like that. But, but I, you know, think it's worth putting, putting those contracts out for an RFP and seeing if we can save the borough some money. Ultimately, we may not be able to, but, but it, it may be possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think for the sake of competition, I mean, we live in a free market. We should be entertaining, you know, the offers of competitors for the same or better coverage at a cheaper rate if possible. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I did have a question. Maybe Alex, you can fill it in. The insurance procurement process for a borough, what, how does that work, right? Because we have a broker, but then we, they're getting insurance for it. Like I'm trying to figure out exactly what the steps of this game is here.
So essentially, it's very akin to how you chose your electric supplier. It's going to function essentially in the same way if you're going through the broker. So the broker's not going to receive any kind of commission directly from the borough for this action. They're just going to go out, they're going to find you the best possible rate, present you with the plans, and then whomever you end up selecting, if you end up switching from your current provider, then, you know, they would provide the quote-unquote finder's fee to that broker, not you. Like you said, I mean, that's essentially the same process that you go through, just like the electric supplier. You know, most municipalities do this every two or three years anyway, just to find a different rate or set, you know, to see what's out there as far as rates and, you know, changes in plans that go. But, you know, many of them end up sticking, of course, with the same provider. But, I mean, mechanically, from here on out, in October, in two weeks, at your regular meeting, you would just motion to authorize an RFP to go out. I don't know if you've contacted or connected with any of the brokers that are suggested through the Borough Association. You might want to contact them in the interim, because generally they, they have a set plan of brokers for you guys to do this. But you just motion about the RFP, you would send it out there and then ultimately you would decide if there's anything out there worth switching to.
So the, the, we could, the RFP is for the insurance itself or for the broker? That's, um.
If you're going through the Borough Association and they have recommended brokers, then you wouldn't necessarily have to do an RFP. But you want to also have that motion and authorization in hand so that if you can't find a suitable broker or, I mean, I don't see why you wouldn't, to be honest. But just as a backup so that you can RFP it out yourself in a timely manner. Because obviously, once the insurance exchange rolls out November, December, even for private and government plans, I mean, this is the time when the plan's changing and renewed for the next year.
Right, because technically, the way we're standing, whoever our broker is now, could just go and get us new quotes. We wouldn't need to really do much of anything in that case?
Yeah, if you have a current broker.
Okay.
I think we do. All right. So what was the consensus? Do we, we're going to put this out for RFP or is that what?
Well, you just get a motion for the option, just in case that you don't want to go through your current broker or if you don't want to switch to a different broker recommended by the Borough Association. Just like as a failsafe, essentially. You have to do it on your own.
So we have to do that at a real, at a voting meeting?
Yeah, at the next meeting here in October.
Okay. All right, Andrew, put it on the agenda.
Mr. President, as a note on insurance and pension, can I get a list of everyone who is currently on insurance and the pension?
Yes. I mean, I think that's something that you, you can certainly have. Andrew, I think you'd have to probably get that through AJ Gallagher, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I can reach out to our, the, the employee benefits manager.
Okay. Also, get me a list of all the vehicles we have insured. I want to make sure that they're up to date. We've had some issues with that that we won't get into. But tell them I'm asking for it.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to discuss the installation of Tom Weber, Chief Tom Weber, as the Borough Fire Marshal. It was brought to my attention quite abruptly and without much notice that our fire marshal had resigned, who was an employee of, of one of the third parties that we had employed here at the borough recently. And nobody informed the council of the resignation. There was no letter received. There was no information to that effect communicated to council. And so we have the vacancy of the, the office of the fire marshal to, to fill. I, I think that Tom Weber has expressed an interest in, in filling the gap. Does anybody have any thoughts?
Tom Weber was actually the fire marshal in the past, so we have a prior record to go off.
Correct. He does have, you know, prior experience. I do think, you know, I think it would be, I mean, it's, it's the best option on the table at the moment, and I think he would be fairly good at it. And I, you know, I'm inclined to support that. I, you know, would hope that you guys would be too at the next meeting. With that said, we'll move on to Public Works. Councilman Willis.
So just off the top, I'd just like to extend my congratulations and the council's congratulations to Dan Falcone. He's retired at this point. And thank him for his 46 years of service to the borough. He will be missed, but we hope that his retirement is as exciting and fun as it can be. So that is, first off. But we have started bulk trash pickup through H&amp;H. We've got a bit of a month of work done so far. I believe we have some restarting pains. Some people reporting that, you know, their trash wasn't picked up, but that was happening prior to H&amp;H doing it. It's just sometimes maybe they put it out a little late. I mean, we're going to try to figure out and track down anytime someone reports that, you know, theirs wasn't picked up or anything like that. But it seems to be functioning properly unless, and anything has happened since the last time I talked to you, Andrew. So that has started. Obviously, we've already discussed street sweeping starting. And that is moving forward. Obviously, again, we're not ticketing, so there's some pains with that running. But, you know, we will return to that normal process come next year, come the spring. Other than that, just reporting those two items or three items, there's nothing new as far as I know to report.
All right, thank you, Councilman Willis. Moving on to public safety, Councilman Ruskowski.
Chief Tom Weber, celebrating his 30th anniversary of service to the fire department, Falkroft.
All right, congratulations, Chief. Anything else, Councilman?
That's all I have.
Okay, excellent. All right, moving on to public health and literacy, Councilwoman Isaac. Councilwoman Isaac, I think you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to bring out there that the video mailbox for voting is out front of the library. There is one. They are also doing five-day lunch giveaway through, where they partnered with a nutrition company. So that's something that's going on with the library.
Okay, very good. Very good. Is that everything, Councilwoman?
That's it.
Okay, very good. Moving on to municipal planning and zoning, Councilman Waters.
I have no news.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Moving on to public parks and recreation, Councilwoman Daly. Actually, before you begin, I just want to give you a shout out for the good work that you did this Saturday. It was a pleasure helping you and joining in the effort. I saw people walking the streets with bags and, and those little handclaws that you pick trash up with. I mean, people were, were getting into it, and I think you did a really good job. But I'm going to hand it over to you for your report.
Yeah, basically, we had over 12 residents who signed up to be what I would consider street captains. And they came out, volunteered to have supplies dropped off at their residence. Their neighbors were able to come, grab bags, come out and get some of that debris that we've been talking about along the sidewalks, all cleaned up. We were able to clean up, let me yell at my kids, hold on one second, boys. Sorry. To clean up a lot of the village. Some of Old Falkroft got cleaned up. We filled up the back of the code enforcement truck with trash bags, which was an impressive amount of trash. One thing that I had noticed, and residents also mentioned to me, was that a lot of the buildup of trash was located in areas where bus stops are. And I found that to be completely true as I ran and helped out on the corners and stuff. So maybe that we look into maybe having trash cans that are maintained by the borough, put into those areas. I know that a trash can doesn't mean that people would put trash in the trash can, but it may help people do the right thing. So it's something I would like to look into and see if it's financially feasible.
Actually, I'm glad.
Those were our trouble areas, for sure.
I'm glad you mentioned that. I actually have the borough manager working on something with Delaware County, I think, Manfree, Mr. Manfree with Delaware County's Parks. Andrew, can you speak to Councilwoman Daly about where we're at on that, the idea of trash cans?
Sure. I, so I, I actually met with Councilman, I'm sorry, I met with Mark Manfree on, I guess it was last Tuesday. And we spoke about it. We had a virtual meeting also with the Planning Commission and to talk about some of the items that the county might be able to, or willing to donate to Falkroft Borough. We're still hammering that out. Right now, it looks like that will be probably limited to some trash cans to start. We're going to try and work on some other things and, you know, walk us through, getting some help from them to sort of beautify the parks and our streets.
Okay, all right, very good. Yes, sir.
It's a good idea with the canes at the bus stops. We tried it. You're going to have to chain the canes. The people were putting their house trash in and stealing the canes.
Tell me you're kidding.
No.
Oh, man.
And have to think of that.
Okay, all right. Andrew, what do these cans look like? Are they like the heavy concrete ones with the, I mean, what are, what are the odds that, you know, they're, they're going to get like heisted?
I believe that they're heavy metal brown trash.
Okay. I'm just watching Councilwoman Daly dress down her kids here on, she's muted, but I can see her. So Lee, is your, are you satisfied with that response? And is that, is this portion of your report all concluded?
That part of my report is, but I do have information on our upcoming Halloween event. Obviously, we cannot do the haunted hallways this year because of COVID-19. But my committee came up with some pretty fun things. We did a flyer release today with all of the events listed on it. But we are going to do individual flyers for each. A common issue that I've been hearing across Falkroft is that people do not know about what we've got going on. It's why I brought up, again, trying to do some kind of app. People are not on Facebook. People are not listening to the robo calls. People don't look at mailers. So we need to find a way to get people actively listening and hearing about this. I'm going to have Andrew print up some of these flyers for the borough. I can also see if we can hang them up in some of the stores up the street. Probably Dunkin' Donuts is my best bet, since I cleaned up a lot of Dunkin' Donuts trash in Falkroft. And there's always a line there. I'm assuming that that is the most populated place in Falkroft. But some of the ideas that we have going on, we call it getting booed by the borough. And what that entails is that families will be able to sign up. And the morning of Halloween, a surprise little Halloween basket of treats and some toys, probably coloring books will be delivered onto the doorstep. Families can sign up for that. Kyle's going to work on an electronic sign up so that we don't overwhelm Denise with calls. We're going to do a best decorated house contest, because that went over really well for 4th of July. Jenna Willis is going to work on a Halloween craft bag again, so it'll be a grab and go. We're going to do a Halloween scavenger hunt. We're doing a pumpkin carving contest. And I reached out to Farm Art here in Falkroft, and they are going to get us a very good price on 150 pumpkins so that we can give them out to residents so that they can participate in the carving contest. And then the last thing that we're going to do is a virtual costume contest. And we'll have directions on how families can enter their costumes and how prizes will be awarded. So we're pretty excited about trying to change it up. I have had people reach out to me already concerned that we are not doing Halloween because we are doing this stuff. And I have assured them that the Borough of Falkroft is not going to stop anybody from trick-or-treating and that they should do so with the safety of their family in mind. Do Halloween however you choose to do it. And that we have no intentions of telling people that they cannot. So that's where we're at for Halloween. People are really excited about some of the ideas, already getting a lot of good feedback on Facebook. So we're excited.
All right, very good.
That's it for me. That's all my fun.
All right, very good, Councilwoman Daly. So moving on to municipal legislation, I'm going to hand that over to Councilman Waters this evening.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, so we're having you take over municipal legislation this evening.
I don't have any, isn't in discuss with that presently.
There is, actually, there's a land development resolution for Form Craft to discuss.
I didn't get any, any.
Okay. All right, I thought that.
No, no.
Okay.
No, no.
I'll jump in for that. Nick, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
So we just put this on the agenda to make you as a council aware that in the midst of finishing the land development agreements and the escrow agreements and the stormwater agreement for Form Craft, we discover, or at least I discovered, that the Borough Council and in November or December of last year did not pass a land development resolution for the project. We have no record of it. I reached out to our third party, and we could not find a copy of it. Lisa's shaking her head, maybe that's not true. You're on mute.
I know that I wrote the resolution.
Okay.
I know that it was acted on. I don't know whether it's actually in the minutes.
Yeah.
Don't know whether the resolution was ever signed.
Okay, yeah, because we couldn't find it in the minutes for November, December, when it should have logically fell in there, and obviously, we don't have a copy. Lisa, can you please check to see if it's not signed? It's fine, we can resubmit it in October's meeting here and execute it by the new council. But that was just why I put it on the agenda, just to make you aware that we had an issue with the land development resolution. Won't affect their construction, won't affect finishing up the agreements. It's just their daughter teasing, cross her eyes here, and actually have it so that they can record their plans and move forward. But, yeah, you'll be voting on that in two weeks.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on to municipal construction, I'm going to take this over for the purposes of this meeting. Moving forward, it will be the responsibility of Councilman Willis. We did have a pre-construction meeting with Ariana. Andrew was there. Bob Lynn was there as well. We discussed several issues. There will be a minutes typed and submitted to the Borough, and from that, those minutes, I would like a checklist to be organized so that we could sort of move through the things that need to be done yet before we qualify for the grant monies. So Lisa, you will probably be moving a little bit more into that role, some of the facets of that, as well as.
Point of information, Mr. President, point of information.
You may.
We do have the grants already. You said before, we can get the grant, we do have the grant.
Correct, so before you could qualify for the disbursement, forgive me for the oversight or mishap there and the way that I communicated that. So there are still some requirements that have to be met that have not yet been met in order for the disbursement of those grant funds. So a lot of that stuff was discussed in the meeting, and of course, Ariana from, and I think that the Budget Office of the State was on that, on that call as well. We will be compiling a proper working checklist of the items that need to be done. Of course, those duties will be divided in a way that is consistent with regular practice and get, get this moving so that we can get this building off the ground. Any questions? All right, moving on to the police chiefs' report. Chief, are you still with us? Chief, I don't, I can't hear you. I think you might be muted if you're still with us.
President, he's on a phone, so you may have to unmute him. I believe it's that 721 number, I believe.
I just asked to unmute.
Are you there?
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, I don't know what's going on with this thing because on my phone I haven't muted, but then it told me that I was muted. Now I'm unmuted, all right. So anyway.
Sorry about that.
Just to let you know, just, we had that shooting on, it was in between on Carter Road and between Bennington and Delview, along with the same people shooting down at Monroe and Taylor. We did make an arrest. The officers on the street did a great job, as well as Darby Township who helped us out. We did arrest four, we took four guns in, we took four guns, and it was three adults and one juvenile. At this time, they are charged. We are, the guns were sent out, so all that stuff's being done, investigated by Corporal White, and it's been a nice job right now so far. So we have the four guns off the street and three people in custody, the juvenile, they sent home. So the other stuff that we have going on is the aerobic watches are all done, the lines are painted, so we're ready to go with that, so we'll be working on that as well. The other thing is, we worked on, I worked on getting the cars out of the township of Borough. We, what do you call it? So we basically took all these cars off the street that were bad from Delview Drive and other ones that were for other people, but the main focus was on Delview because they're running a business, basically sending cars over to Africa or whatever they were sending them to in containers. And what else? That's all I got.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, the solicitors' report.
Nothing really new to add aside from FormCrafts, yeah, FormCraft, I'm sorry. So that was a big issue, but other than that, it's all quiet.
Okay, very good. We will be skipping over the financial director's report for this meeting, Borough Manager's report.
I wanted to start out, before I really get into it, by taking a moment to talk about one of our officers and their service to the Borough. One of our officers was lightly injured and thankfully is okay in an incident last week. Chief can fill in more information, and I wanted to take a moment to take a shout out to that officer and to every one of our officers, let them know that I think we have, I would, I would wager pound for pound, the best police department in Delaware County. These guys put themselves in line every single day, so I, from the bottom of my heart, as a person who you keep safe and as a Borough-appointed employee, thank you. So anyway, I wanted to talk about the office. Denise has now been filling in the position full-time, filling in for about four months. I think it's past time for her to be formally made a full-time employee. She has been fantastic. Our residents love her. She's loyal. She cares about everyone that she deals with, and I think that she deserves to be made full-time at our voting meeting on October 20th, but again, I'll defer to you. We have food giveaways coming up every Wednesday through the month of October. State Representative Dave DeLoso has graciously received a donation through a charitable organization of 150 boxes of meat, dairy, and vegetables. It'll be different every week. It's, I believe it's actually federal originally, and that will be distributed from a lot across the street from Borough Hall. We literally just got that confirmed at 4:00 today, so I apologize for the late notice. We had been told about it. We didn't actually get it confirmed. I didn't get detailed information about timing and volume and things like that until today. So I wanted to let you know that. And then again, that'll be going through, that's every Wednesday in October. You already covered the trash cans and how it relates to Lee. And then last, the code enforcement report. We've, you know, as, as noted in previous meetings, council has tasked me with reporting on the status of code, how enforcement's going in the Borough and how it relates to previous months and our other previous years, the same month in previous years. This month, we wrote at least, and I initially had been under the understanding it was 225 tickets for the month of September. I actually believe that number's 204 tickets, a code enforcement violation fines for the month of September. There seems to be a noticeable but still minimal decrease in the number of violations that we're finding out there, but of course, tall grass starting to go away as the month progresses, as the weather gets colder, so that, that could also be a part of it. We're seeing some regular offenders address the issues and some that are not, but we're going to keep working on that. We don't have totally accurate records for the month of September, October, November, or I believe December of 2019. Our best guess is that there were 20 tickets written in the month of September 2019, and that's that.
Right. Thank you, Borough Manager Hayman.
Hey, Andrew, I'm sorry, I have a question for the Borough Manager. How many tickets were written in the months of March, April, May, June, July, and August of 2020?
So the, up to July, I'm not sure of the exact number of months. In August, it was 284. I believe we were roughly averaging about 60 per month in the previous months before that. I can't speak about March. I think March was a little bit off. March, March, April, May were off because of the, because of COVID and the shutdown.
And just one last question on your report. You had mentioned Denise, that's who you refer to as your executive assistant, correct?
That's administrative assistant, I believe is the title.
Got it, thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions for the Borough Manager? Let's.
When is the, when on Wednesdays is the food giveaway going to be done, Andrew?
12:00 to 3:00 PM on every Wednesday.
And that will be staffed by Representative DeLoso's office, correct?
Representative DeLoso's office is committed to have staff. They've asked for help. I think that they're going to need the majority of that help in the first hour, just judging by how our previous giveaways go. So I've spoken to the chief, he's agreed to have a few officers who are already on duty be there, so long as there's not an emergency for that first hour. I will be there for that first hour, and I can come back or alternatively send Denise, or even if necessary, if there is for some reason to be very high volume, a highway employee.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't anticipate, especially for the first one, that there would be a ton of turnout, but maybe we'll get lucky.
Okay. All right, very good. Moving on to whole business. New business.
I have some new business. Is the HR consultant on this call?
No, not presently.
I'd like to ask him to put together a dress code policy that we could vote on at the October meeting.
For what purpose?
We don't have one.
Okay, all right, we could certainly, we could visit that. I'm open to it. So there was never one put into place prior to this being raised this evening, correct?
Sorry, I'm muting, I'm playing the mutant on mute game myself. You know what? We never had an HR consultant before now. I figure let's take advantage of him. He's on staff, why not have, this is what he's here for, right?
Yes, I mean, I think actually, I like, I happen to err on the side of liking dress codes. I think I'd like one for the highway for, you know, we have one for our police department, and they adhere to it immaculately, so I'm not opposed to it. I think it's.
I would, I would ask that he doesn't reference the police department, because I think their dress code is put out by the chief, who would have a better knowledge of what the police should be wearing.
Yeah, I think he was just pointing out that the police department is successful with the dress code.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Jason. This is obviously just internal to the administration, I would assume is what you're referring to.
Kyle, spot on, thank you.
Yeah, we'll be happy to do that. So I'd like to entertain, is there anything else under new business? No, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Joe, real quick, I believe you had something you wanted to talk about under new business that we discussed previously, unless you've changed your mind.
Uh, you'll have to refresh my memory.
The park naming.
So I did, so there was some talk, there was some talk about renaming Delmore Drive. I would like to entertain the idea of perhaps renaming Montgomery Park. I mean, no offense to anybody who's from Montgomery County, but I don't think there are too many people who are familiar with that. No, no, no offense, Alex. Too many people familiar with who General Montgomery was either. I don't know that he's particularly important to modern life or relatable to many of the people who live in Fallcroft. That is not in any way meant to detract or shrink from his amazing contribution to the American Revolution and onward, but I just don't think Montgomery Park really suits Fallcroft. I don't think the name is really synonymous with any particular part of our history or in any way synonymous with identifying with the people of the Borough. So I would like to consider the renaming of Montgomery Park rather than of Delmore Drive to be named after President Obama. I think it's something that I would like to consider. I'd like the council to maybe think about. I'm not going to be proposing any name changes at the next voting meeting, but it's something that I'd like to maybe kick around and talk about. Does anybody have anything to add to that?
I have.
Is it possible to put other parks on that agenda as well, like Lambwell and others along that line, if we're going to start renaming parks?
Um, yeah, I mean, if, if there's, if there are, if there's, you know, a majority consent from council, I don't see, you know, that, that, I don't see why we couldn't.
So I would, I don't know if this was Lee was going to say, but maybe we can discuss some of this stuff and people, if people wish to make suggestions to the Parks and Rec Committee, and we can kind of sort that out. And Jason, obviously, if you have suggestions or if any other council members, I don't want to take your thunder, Lee, but.
No, that was, that was along the lines, and also, Lisa, you had mentioned to me about putting Montgomery Park on the list of things that need attention and possibly trying to get grant money for them. So that might be a good time to look at renaming a park is when we do an overhaul.
I think that's a good point. I think that's a good point. Listen, if we're going to name the place after him, I don't think it would hurt to try and solicit for some private donations as well, but long shot, but it's worth considering. But, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Maybe we should, we should, those suggestions should go through you. Councilman Daly, Councilwoman Daly, rather, sorry. So I don't have anything else under new business. Anybody have anything else to add?
Lisa, you unmuted but didn't talk. Did you have something that you wanted to say about Montgomery Park? Oh, okay.
We had a master plan done, that's all.
Oh, you did?
Really not germane to the conversation.
No, but I knew that you had said something so that if we're going to change a name, let's make it worthy of a name change, and let's fix that park before we name it again.
Lee, I'm sorry, I'll wait.
No, no, you go ahead, Councilman, I'm sorry.
Lee, I'm sorry, just a, just a little rewind back to the movie night you guys had. That was pretty successful. Did we pay for all that, or were there any private donations that came along the way that we can give credit to?
We, we paid for all of it.
Got it.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Go in peace. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Have a good night.
That's why I am muted.
Good night, everybody.